Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, September ten, two thousand twenty-five, and we was at Gloucester School Committee meeting at the Gloucester High School Library. The public is welcome to its own meetings in person or alternatively through Zoom link provided on the agenda. The meeting notes will reflect if the meeting is be assumed only. As amendments to the open meeting will allow the school committee may contain a whole meeting locally. Please know the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupted.
You can do that by sending aloud a talk, okay?
I will all the way to the corner and save the permission of Gloucester for the schools.
She'll let me speak. So I'm just allowed to talk. What can I contribute? Sorry, man.
No, I'm sorry.
The United States of America and to your republic, for which stands one nation under the invisible with every being just as well.
Hi, both of you. Sorry. Ben, Mr. Office.
Keegan. Right, so we will begin with introductions as to who is announced this evening and also on Zoom.
Kiri Frisch, I'm the CFO.
Ian Mosbella is the superintendent.
And Mr. Superintendent.
Darren McKeeans will commit.
Well, we see the school committee.
Kathy Fancy, school committee.
Keegan Jewell, executive vice president.
Martina Cracchillo, executive board president.
Cody Marshall, finance director.
Others on Zoom. Keith.
Hi, Keith Minio, school committee.
Bill Melvin, school committee.
First item of business is oral communications. If anybody would like to speak to the school committee, you may do so now. And we have two people in attendance.
I have to put my glasses on because forgetting all this part. My name is Andrea Leocas. I live at twenty-eight A Wytham Street. I'm speaking tonight for two reasons. One, because I'm interested in learning more about possible solutions for the busing concerns that have been raised by several parents of students traveling to Plum Cove, who live just under the one point five mile eligibility requirement for busing. The important aspect in this particular equation is not necessarily the distance, but the overall safety concerns. My second issue is also related to busing, but it deals with O'Malley Middle School. Regarding Plum Cove, while there's a sidewalk on one side of Washington Street, it is extremely narrow, and elementary schools have to cross a dangerously busy street twice if they were to walk or ride a bike to or from school. There are no crossing guards. Earlier this week, there was an accident between a car and an adult cyclist. However, this could just as easily have been an elementary school student. The number of cars on Washington Street and the way some people are driving in the city are absolutely part of this problem. I'm hoping, I'm hopeful to hear how the district plans to address safety for those families so that we have safe ways for our youngest kids in Gloucester to get to and from school. In terms of O'Malley, for the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five school year, it appears that a late bus opportunity, either the three thirty or four fifteen P M., or in some cases, both options, were canceled approximately fifty times based on a search of my text notifications. Students have been in school for five days currently. Late buses have been canceled three of the five days so far. Students at O'Malley are lucky to participate in O'Malley after-school programs like O'Malley Academy. Signups for those programs are now live. Students also attend extra help, cross-country, or field hockey in the fall or are involved in Mount Olympia. In Gloucester, we have many working families who are reliant upon this after-school transportation to make sure their children can participate in these programs. Canceling a planned and safe ride home via text message, sometimes with very minimal notice, should not be acceptable, and it creates an equity issue. Those students who have families that live within close walking distance or who have flexibility with regards to transportation are able to take full advantage of after-school offerings, while those families who live further away and do not have the ability to pick up their children are not able to participate the same way. O'Malley Academy creates another connection to school and helps to foster friendships among kids with common interests. O'Malley Academy provides a safe and structured environment for an age group that is frequently to blame for causing some of the mayhem in the city. How many of us have heard of the kids riding bikes in and out of traffic or the kids wreaking havoc at Gloucester Crossing? Kids with nothing to do and nowhere to be will always find something to do, and it isn't necessarily what we would choose. Last year, I sat in a community forum about student behavior at O'Malley, and at this time, there has been no update, but more a sense of growing parent frustration than unless something is at a breaking point, nothing will get done. Or, in fairness, maybe it is getting done, but there's been no communication about it. The same holds true for the busing issue. I'm hoping that there can be some creative ideas generated this year to find ways to attract, train, and retain bus drivers for the district, allowing families who are looking for a way to get their children to school safely or keep their children engaged at school after school, an opportunity to do so without creating another hardship. Thank you.
I'll be giving an update during my report.
Awesome. That is all the public comments. I can say them. I usually don't do, but it's from the chair. I'm just gonna say. I just want to say, you know, we're off to a new school year. This is our first school committee meeting since we, since the students came back, and I'm looking forward to a great school year all around. There's so much to be excited about, and I'm sure Superintendent Melvin will talk about that. Send anyone. Yes, true. The new school year. Next item of business is our student and, oh, recognitions.
I'll have a bunch.
You'll have a bunch.
Yes, I'm going to go look for the committee.
Yeah. I'll just, I'll do, I have a fifth over, so I will just recognize that they're already starting on their really amazing field trips going on the land and, you know, they just, they really have a fun Gloucester year. The store. So that's already starting and recognize everyone who goes in.
Second. Also, fifth grade. They got a field trip tomorrow. It's wonderful, so.
And I'll just, I know we'll go into depth, but I just want to acknowledge the Department of Public Works, who is doing a amazing job getting the buildings ready for, for students and the work that has been done over the summer, which we will, I'm sure, share more pictures and information. But we appreciate their effort, and they take great pride in our schools, so thank you for all that. Okay, next item of business is the Student Advisory Council, and we have Martina and Keegan with us tonight.
Hello, hi, everyone. I'm Martina Cracchillo, and I'm the president of the two thousand twenty-six Executive Board.
Hi, I'm Keegan. I'm the vice president. So first off, I just want to say thank you, guys, for having us be here. We're very excited for the school year, and we're just gonna go over some stuff that's currently going on, what we're working for, just to make our school year fun and looking easy for senior year.
So to start, the National Art Honor Society is continuing with their Art Buddies program, where a junior or senior student that's a part of the society is paired with the third grader elementary schooler from Beeman, and they work after-school on different art projects. And then this Friday, we have Picture Day at G H S. Our Think Pink shirts will be on sale for sixteen dollars for our homecoming game that's Think Pink themed on October seventeenth. The Burnt Workwear has donated hundreds of boots for our C V T E students. The pep rally is October seventeenth, and we will be planning this soon and having a spirit week the week leading up to it. Student council elections for the upcoming freshmen will be September twenty-fourth. Our college planning night is Thursday, September twenty-fifth for seniors at six P M. Our senior class will be doing a big sale at the primary elections this Tuesday. The brand-new girls volleyball team will have, will be having Machaca fundraiser night and a car wash. The fundraiser is September twenty, the September seventeenth, and the car wash is September twentieth. And then the football team is selling gold cards and having a jalapeno night. And the gold cards, if you show them at your restaurant, you get ten percent off of your order. The sophomore class is doing a Mingled fundraiser September twenty-ninth, and during the month of October, the junior class is doing a calendar fundraiser.
First, wondering if you guys have any questions about what we're planning, anything we said, talked about? No?
What date was the the gold card? Is that for a different date than the Chagas?
The jalapeno night that the football is doing is October first, and I think the gold cards are being sold right now, but I'm not quite sure when that selling ends.
And the volleyball.
The Machaca night is September seventeenth, and then the car wash is September twentieth. Thank you, guys, for having us.
Thank you. So we always love hearing what's going on at the school, and there may be times when you want to stay or times that there's a topic we may encourage you to stay when we want feedback or your input, because you're welcome to participate in our discussion. Although you can't vote, you can certainly present what you feel about it. For example, the cell phone policy that's in place was discussed last fall, and so having students vote whenever we can on things that you would probably want to weigh in on pro or con would be really helpful and happy with us.
Of course.
Okay, so you're welcome to stay always, but we understand why you want to be.
Thank you.
Where, where one is my eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Anybody have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Remove that the accept the inside agenda, child or book presentation?
Okay, Luke, and seconded. We need a rule called vote, so I will do that. I'll start online with Keith Minio.
Yes. I mean, sorry, what am I? Is it? Yes, I, I, yes, I'm voting for the consent. Yes.
Okay, Bill Melvin. Will you read it? Okay, well, not enough his vote. No, no, Kiri McKeeans?
Yes.
For recent? Yes. Kathy Fancy, yes. Okay, next item of business is deliberations on education issues and super preliminary reports.
All right. We're down to person, very important person to have releasing, so we are rallying all hands on tech tonight. So we'll, 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 so, great, very exciting tonight for school committee meetings since school started. Not only neither week ago, last Thursday for students, a little more than a week for staff, to last Tuesday. As we said, we go off to home schools, every day matters. Everybody belongs. And every student learns. So off to a great start, as folks said, really great start this year, a lot of positivity and focused on purpose and just a real different feel all across the board. I'll share some of that. And it started last Monday, last Tuesday, sorry, last Tuesday. Hard to imagine that last Monday was Labor Day. It seems like longer than that, but anyway. We started this year with two staff workdays before the start of the school year. That's not been done in Gloucester for quite some time. Pretty common in other districts. This new requirement for the second day to be done at school at the workplace, we negotiated, including the new collective bargaining agreements. We've had typically one day, and that one day in the past tried to get major things done. And so it was very hard, very frantic for teachers and staff and leaders. And also, it also was anxiety-averse. Things have shifted quite a bit, and it's a testament to the work done to make this in the agreement. So we have day one, September second. This day is organized and directed by school administrators. It starts off, started off with a full school, full staff communication in O'Malley. We do that every year. It's not different this year. My remarks, we have Kathy Fancy speak, the mayor speak, G T A president Rachel Rex speak, I spoke. In my remarks, we're really focused on three things, gratitude, being thankful for all that is great and wonderful in our schools and all in our colleagues, our staff, and families, and students. Positivity, how do we, you know, build and continue a positive moment here in our schools? And then purpose, how do we move forward with common purpose? To make sure our schools are doing right by our students, improving academic learning, deepening student learning, and really gaining students and deep way for every day. That day has always had union meetings for a short time, and then this year, what happened was that then folks, everyone goes to their various schools and workplaces, and there were a variety of things that happened across the schools, differently to different places, but here are some examples of them. One, setting clear expectations for the year ahead, that sort of thing in a variety of areas. Professional learning and or support in these areas, multilingual learner education, co-teaching, safety care training for the preschool staff, and also work on our new data platform. Many of the schools worked on identifying a common purpose and or a portion of a learner, really coming together about what's their, what's their common purpose to drive them throughout the year. Just quite special education program staff. I think pretty much all met with Special Education Director Mark Mike Jarvis and their teams of program staff, okay? It wasn't a big meeting. It was individual team meetings. I think, I think he was able to get to all the program staff. Team building across the school staff always, and welcome, welcome back, and also department meetings, really productive day. And really what the, having a second day really allowed both days, but really this day to be very successful, okay? Because teachers then on the staff, then on the second day, it was a self-directed workday. They could do whatever they wanted in terms of getting ready for the school year. They made those choices, and that's could be creating schedules for special education students, mandatory trainings they're obligated to do every year. It could be classroom setup, review of I P, I Ps or five oh fours, meeting special education colleagues or preparation with any colleague they chose, okay, and preparing with their, with their professions as well. And that, those are just, those are just, you know, ideas, suggestions, guidance from our principals or idea, but folks can really do anything. And those two combined really help people be set up or be ready to start in a way that was sort of less frantic than in the past. So really had both days that had a positive impact on the third day, which was, which was, I'm missing a photo here, unfortunately. Supposed to be from, from, from East Veterans. I have those photos. I didn't put them in. Anyway, this is just one example. I want to show some, some photos from the staff work, the two, two staff workdays at O'Malley. I believe they're working on their common purpose there, which is great, but they were off, you know. Folks take more photos of students than they do of staff, and so it's kind of hard to get some photos here. I'll get into the first day in a moment, but this happened before school. Just Elise Nagara from the Council on Aging reached out to our Brian Lefada, athletic director, and the golf team came through with just great support on creating their sort of senior council, the picnic sponsored by Council on Aging, setting it up, breaking it down. And Elise Nagara could not have been more effusive with her praise and appreciation for our athletes or student athletes, specifically the golf team, and helping out. So they were really, as you can see, she's, you know, I thought they were amazing. Coach Quinn, thank you to him. Thank you, Brian Lefada. Really thought that the students were amazing and at least helped them set up and then be ready soon. So appreciate the athletes helping out. Here's some first day photos. These are actually from today, because the preschool and kindergarten start today fully. So a couple of kids happy there on their first day of preschool. Excellent. Beeman, you have some first grade teachers here on the left. Jennifer Sanfilippo, welcome. Her students. Beeman has a great start every year. All the kids and families are drop off the kids outside, sort of in play area, courtyard area behind the school, different parts around the school, and then people walking together to their classrooms. So there's just this great energy at Beeman on the opening day. Folks will remember it was a beautiful sunny day for all of us. And then on the right there, first grade teacher Shannon Killian, her student doing meeting time, doing some calendar math. I believe that's on the second day of school. Great for them, just great, great teachers there. East veterans. On the left, sort of family and friends there on the left, and then here, these veterans are families and staff and students congregating in the back on, on or near the playground, and they organize themselves to walk in for the first day. They get all their students in. Some of the other elementary schools, all their students see their teachers outside, line up there, organized there, so they all walk in together to their classroom. And it's a great start, start, starting tradition for our elementary schools. I usually, there are tons and tons of smiles on the first day always, saying people, you know, reseeing each other, seeing each other for the first time since their last school year, or happy to be there. There's excitement and nervousness, and there always are some tears. But this year, I only saw one set of tears. It happened to be a small student, these veterans.
You weren't looking at the parents.
Well, I was, but I, so they hold it in pretty well usually. Not always, but they were. But one set of tears, a small, this is a small little guy here, these veterans, but at Plum Cove, you see there Sarah Black with her first grade classroom, welcoming her on day one. On the left, on the right, sorry. As always, kids playing on the playground. That always happens every single day, just about. Considering whether, let's Plum Cove, here's West Parish. Big, West Parish has really cemented the big sign approach. They have it in so many ways, so many different times. I believe this is P T O sponsored, supported. And there on the left-hand side are the students again lining up, meeting their teachers, organizing, supporting, walking to school there, so. Yeah, it was that beautiful day. This happens too on the first day. This is the first lost and found item of the year. You'll notice the time, eight thirty-two A M. I'm sorry, probably, I had it on nine oh two A M. It actually was just after. Yeah, that was the first lost and found item. I saw it placed there, and I thought I'd take a picture. There you go. It happens. O'Malley had a great first grade, had a great start as well, a lot of positivity and a lot of, you know, staff really working together on, on routines and expectations, students and how they work and how they walk around the building, work in the building. And on the left-hand side, it's the first day and the second day. I had the second day, because that's a, that is just a classic middle school picture of clumping. Okay, with my clumping, and middle school students just sort of like, you know, they group together. They group together, they move together. I've been to it a lot, bring a fiscal age, but that's it. You can see the clumps there on the right. On the left, a little less clumping, because their teachers are helping them organize, again, before they walk into school as well. It was funny day. So, but again, just want to really focus on O'Malley here, just really appreciate the staff, their building on the work they did in the springtime about routines and consistency, expectations and clarity. As folks know, we now have the assistant principals staying with their, you know, starting this year, staying with their classes, their grades, to build up that sort of community and consistency and how the adults work together. And that's crucial for the setting the culture, creating a real positive culture, but also making sure kids know expectations and follow them. So appreciate the work that O'Malley staff and leadership are doing on that from day one, or like I said, continued work from last year, so really off to a good start there. Here's lots, some, some photos with Gloucester High. On the left, we have carpentry. On the right, it's a biology classroom getting going. So, you know, right down to work at the, at the high school. On the left, that's medical assisting classroom with kids in it, with students in it. Those are ninth graders in the exploratory program, so that is officially launched, which is no small feat. And at the opening complication, I did a shout out to Brenda Wasslick, Stephen Abel, and Bob Devlin, our tech director or instructors, were all very instrumental in, in working on and then also working with students to get the facility and running of things launched. So we're very excited to have a fifth program and all our exploratory program operating. So as you know, folks, we got that and really just, you know, I only say that for a long time. It was, it was according to plan, but we stuck with it, you know. You know, adjusted as necessary, and then just, you know, work through, through the, the different pieces and help. And there is, yeah, and there's the high school cafeteria. You can see it's an orderly place, kids talking and working and thinking and this rest of it. And so that's, you know, a big part of school, though, it's great start. Many of our athletics. Wanted just a shout out to Dawn Enos, who's our fantastic, not ours, is she's her, you know, she does athletics photography across the, the system, across high school for us, and just does it because she's a tremendous person. And so there are a couple of great photos. We did beat Beverly in the opener. Yes. That, that's good. I support that. And just a hard fought game came down to the very end, but we really toughed it out. So it's a great job. Really appreciate the spirit from the students at the, at the football game last Friday night, and then our new cheer squad. Not new, but just, you know, bigger, larger cheer squad, just did a fantastic job, a lot of energy. I'm really, really happy we're strengthening that program, strengthening that team. And they were doing tumbling and throwing people and catching people and all sorts of. Very impressive, so wanted to just give them a shout out. And then, so that's, so those are just, I will stop, just stop for a moment and say it's been a really great opening. Across the board, folks have said, this is staff I've talked to, school leaders I've spoken to, parents I've spoken to, but really just people really pleased with being back at work, being back in school, being really positive about things, and just open with a great start. And just really, I have a lot of gratitude for our staff and school leaders for the work they put in, you know, over the summer on their own time, and also through summer learning that we support as a district. You know, helping support paraprofessionals, training to get, so they're, they're ready and more so than they have in the past. And then, of course, you know, they get to go in last week, so this week, so just really appreciate. This will be open now. That's a great field. Another big thing's happened. I'm putting out here because it really matters for our families, a Sawyer Free library opening. And here you have on the left, the children's room, the whole second floor is Sawyer Free, which is a new floor. They didn't really have a full second floor that before, is all devoted to kids, they're, they're children, teens and tweens, basically, right? On the left is just a, a big photo of a very large children's section area. It's a great seating, great lots of books, all sorts of things there. On the right is the, is the sort of teen, teen room, teen area. New picture of that. You'll see there's chess, there's books, there's, there's also areas for them to do like Xbox stuff and, and playing online or something with each other. There's this great soft seating, and the best view in the whole library now is actually in the teen room, which is this view looking on the right, frame, that big window framing City Hall. So just excited for our families or students to be able to access and utilize this great new remodel facility and community space. And then also, I'm really happy that at kindergarten kindergarten, that Sawyer Free library is there to hand out library cards. So just a great community resource. I think that's it for the updates. Any questions, comments?
Did they win the, they gave this world record for the most?
I don't know that. I didn't know.
I got two of that, I got.
You had two. So what Mr. McKee is talking about is the Sawyer Free was trying to set the world record for most library cards given out or distributed or in, in a single day. I can't remember who they're competing with, but it seemed like an ambitious goal. Yeah, anyway, so they were working on that. They were trying to give it to everyone. If you got a renewal account, so. Anyway, so other questions?
Excuse us, but we have to go. Thank you for having us.
All right, so I'll give you a transcript update. Gave one at our last meeting, so some of this is a repeat for at least people around there then or the committee, but there are also new things too, because what I will say is, as we get going in, I'll mention this too, but I'll talk it through. Is there's, there's in, in school transportation, there's always a sorting out here, okay? The first couple of weeks are, are, there's just various hiccups. And like, and this year as well, sort of, sort of goes through. I'll talk about some of our ongoing challenges and some of our specific challenges of this year, that sort of happens. I'll also talk about some good news as well. So what's going well is the roots were posted and shared with families earlier this year than the past, so we're doing a better job of that. Just much smoother distribution of the, of the lists of students who are registered buses to schools, okay? And those also at the same time are work in progress, okay? I'll talk about in a moment. And then there's been a lot of one-on-ones to support of families, either through the transportation department or our family support staff in English, in Spanish, Portuguese, to help folks register and get ready and figure out exactly where they're going and what the stops are and timing. Okay, so those, those things are going well and improved from last year. There's some ongoing challenges, meaning they're not, not new this year, okay? And I want to sort of highlight these, because some of these have been ongoing for a while, and it's often that whenever we have challenges, folks come in and join them at different times, just no ultimate zone, it just happens, okay? And so just want to also sort of get the public up to speed a little bit more on some of these we've been dealing with quite some time. So first of all, I mentioned the sorting out period. That just happens every year. Folks are still registering for bus, for buses. We get the kindergartners registered later. Families come in late, either to enroll in schools or assign for buses. That's not something that's been on their mind. It actually is typical, like traffic is heavier this time of year, okay, compared to later in the school year, I'll be compared in the summertime, okay? And I, and I, and actually, the Blimmin Bridge is more of a problem this time of the year than it is later, okay? And one specific bus is having problems there, okay? Those are things that just happen in this time of year specifically, okay? And part of that is just, you know, still working with families to make sure that they're registered for the buses and enroll in school races, okay? Look, for those, that affects numbers, okay? We have ongoing driver shortage. This has been going on for, since COVID, it's five plus years now. It's not a Gloucester specific thing. Something I shared two weeks ago, I'd share again, is that we continue to have this pattern of gaining a driver or two and losing a driver. And that's happened again. Okay, we gain. And that's happened again. Okay, we gained, I think, one or two drivers last year and we lost another summer. Right, that's, that is impact or causing some of the challenges were happening that's specific to this year round, right? That, that drive, ongoing driver shortage means that we'll continue to do anything to be the last year, solidating routes, routes when drivers are absent for whatever reason. Okay, it will impact field trips um, on occasion and maybe some frequently. Um, and it means we're, we've been trying to add a route. Uh, on, on, the main, what, the main, what avenue areas and standards for years, folks have had games for a number, at least two years, if not more, okay? And we're still in. Okay, um, something we had as a goal, we thought we were getting closer to that, but not there. Talk more about that in a moment. Yeah.
Just, I mean, do we have any sense of why we need these drivers? Like, why the cycle?
Yeah, it's a common, common things. One is um, uh. Um, competition, so folks have left for others, okay? Other places or other, other type of transportation work. That's, that's one of the reasons. Um, also a certain, some of the challenges just in terms of just um. Uh, it's, it's a job that, you know, just is lending itself. It's more true for, I don't know, but, but we, we're, we're. I think we have some ideas on internally how, we, we can, you know, fix and know and, and, and work on. Um, so we'll continue to do that, you know, in terms of management support, that sort of thing. Uh, management, management and support of staff. Um, so those are a couple of areas we need to talk.
Yeah, and just because we did raise the salary, we read, you know, to be more aligned with what this was, other surrounding difference. So that was meant to.
So we've raised the salaries. We have an incentive for drivers to, you know, and, and, you know, to uh, for, you know, hiring, you know, for, you know, for referral, that sort of stuff. And that, that's been on in place. We advertise quite a bit. We're, we never stop advertising, you know, um, we, you know, have that. Um, a banner out there uh, near at the YMCA for a, you know, while now. Um, so, but again, you know. Really, really open to um, any ideas, any help, you know, often it is, it al- always happens that, you know, there, there are more. People in the community to help, you know, to, that can pass the word, us alone. So getting the word out helps a ton.
Yeah.
Um, you know, um, and that, that's, that's um. You know, so, so, but, but again, I'm not saying we have it all figured out and all doing it right in the, um, you know, ironizing marketing, screwing this or stuff. Um, but it's, it's a. Um, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a challenging um, job. It's a, it's a challenge, time, time, time to fill this. I will say really important for going any further is, is I want to really, really um, communicate that um. Uh, as I get into the challenges that we're facing specifically right now, um, you know, uh. I really care deeply and, and I'm working on so many way, working, you know, really hard. On, you know, safe, get, can get safely into school and home, okay? Like that's, or if it might be, you know, that's a real, something we really care a ton about, right? And also really care about the access to, I mean, the O'Malley Academy and opportunities for middle school students. You know, it's something that. That we've been working really hard to support over the years. Um, I'll describe some of the issues that are, you know, making both, um, you know. Making O'Malley challenging as well this year and last, um, specifically, but, but those are things we really care. We're not, we're not thinking of Miley and Julie R. Cardon. We get this one, some of the specific challenges, O'Malley isn't on here, but I.
A lot of our bus drivers have been, been with us for quite a while and. After the pandemic, it was hard to recruit new bus drivers. There were at least a couple that wanted to retire. The state continued on driving for a couple of years. So when you hire new ones, then they eventually retire. Cause that was their opportunity. So. You can't begrudge them for retiring. They gave us their all. Um. So it's just one of those jobs that it has to fit with somebody's schedule and desire of that two parts of the day.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll talk about three challenges around this. There's specifics, special education buses, Plum Cove, O'Malley Academy. Um, special education bus, losing that one driver has impacted special education buses in the books. Um, it's resulted in longer runs, which have so far led to some of the buses arriving late. Some of the special education buses arriving late to school, okay? But our other buses are doing quite well, especially for starting new. Uh, but special education is where we're having the challenge, okay? Um, so I've been working with Lori Francis, uh, I agree, I'm on these issues, uh, you know, really sort of, you know. Directly, uh, including looking at routes, looking at this sort of stuff. We are working um, on splitting one of those special education routes into two. And now positively impact two schools because what people may not know is that, you know, a bus and a bus driver will have, you know, typically have an O'Malley run. And then one of the, the early elementary schools and then West Parish as well. And not everyone has that, but a number will do. Um, so we're looking and, 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 and expecting to do that in the next few school days, okay? Uh, but really, and that will actually, you know, like I said, impact two elementary schools. Um, that, that's roots having, you know, uh, it's a challenge now to get there on time. So that's something that we're definitely doing. Plum Cove, so interrogation, a number of families, um, you heard tonight, but also emails, emails to go to the school committee myself. From a, a small, I'm not, I mean, I'm gonna say a smaller family, so five or six families to this point. Um. And uh, about the bus stops are eliminated from Plum Cove a year ago, okay? Uh, those bus, those bus routes are within one point five miles. That is the um. The policy of the school committee, um, in terms of uh, uh, providing transportation. And you want to remind folks, that's, that's more, I guess generous, for lack of a better word, than state, state uh, expectation, which is two point zero miles, okay? That's first, that's, you know, K through uh, B at least, okay? The stops in question along Washington Street, they're closer than this, okay? They, we eliminated them last year because the buses on Plum Cove were too full. That's, it's, it's a numbers issue basically. There are sidewalks, crosswalks on this route, okay? I'm not saying that, that folks are comfortable on, on walking. Um, I, that's, that's, that's up to them, not to me, to determine. Um, but I do want to be clear that it's about the numbers. Um, we have two bus routes going Plum Cove. We've had two bus routes, I think as far as I can remember, okay? Um, when we changed the zones, uh, we had more kids pick the bus. And uh. This point, uh, those numbers, so uh, by um. What's posted on buses is, is, is a, is a maximum of seventy seven miles. We never, we never put that, we can't fit that many kids on a bus, okay? That's three to a seat, um, in every single seat, okay? Um, we've never filled a bus that, that, we never, I say fill a bus, I mean, we never registered that many students on a bus. That, that is kindergarten, first graders who fit that many kids on a bus. Yeah, kindergarten for small kids, okay? Um, we expect, um, we consider a bus full around the sixty five number, okay? These two buses are, uh, one, one is a sixty, fifty nine, sorry, fifty nine, and one's a sixty two, sixty three. That's before we are finished enrolling kids in kindergarten, okay? That's just starting, that's, that's today is the first day kindergarten is actually running fully. Um, so as I've, I've communicated with some of these families, some of the families about this is we want to see where those numbers sort out on it. You want to, we're both sure about them. Um, and see if any changes can be made. There are a couple of challenges with that, just to be open and transparent about this. Um, is one is um. We, we consider a bus full like the kids who are registered and enrolled for that bus. The reason for that is we can't register more kids than the bus can possibly hold. I don't mean the seventy seven number, I mean the actual number of sixty five. We haven't gone above sixty five in, I don't know how long, if, you know, for a long time. Because we can't have it that, because something, on different days, some fam- families decide the kids are sick or absent, okay? So they're not on the bus. Then we've decided to drive them for whatever reason or pick them up for whatever reason. It's up to your family to do that, okay? Um, we can't have it where we have too many kids registered for a bus because if that bus is full of no seats, they get to a later bus stop. That's on the route and there were kids there. We can't at that point leave those kids hanging. That families are expecting the bus. They made plans for that bus to be there. You can't actually, you know, build in, um, I'm, you know, a, a, uh, we, we. Can't build in excess, can't allow for that. Okay, that's frustrating for families. They see a bus that is quite full from their, from their estimation. Um, cause this happened last year and, you know, at, at Plum Cove and it's happened before also in the Maplewood area as well. Um, and so I understand that restriction, that, you know, but, but I didn't want to help the committee and the public understand that. There's some limitations we have on, on how, there's some, there's some practices we follow. Um, that uh, may not make sense to a, a family that's really struggling with getting to school. Um, but it's something that we uh, need to consistently do because we can't, there's no way to do it otherwise at this point, right? Um, I will, once we finalize everything, I will meet families and open to ideas and considerations and I want them to want to think this through. You know, neither Lori Francis, the director, myself, certainly we have all the answers, okay? Um, but really in this way, it's um, it's about, and other concerns in terms of, can, you know, can this be, you know, there's a, there's a um. Part of the policy, the school committee's policy of transportation where if it's a, if it's a safety issue. Then we can allow for buses coming, you know, short of the one point five miles, okay? Um, and this is, we've only, we only do that twice in this district. One is a longstanding one of kids crossing one twenty eight. At the, at the one twenty eight and uh, Eastern Avenue. Right? Um, that specific intersection. And then uh, that, that's been in existence, that exception's been existed since, since when better schools there before, yeah, so for a number of years. And the other one is um, along um, one thirty three, I think it's West Parish, they're on the sidewalks well. Those are two exceptions we, we've been operating on for a number of years, so. Again, in kind of the families, we'll reach out to them again. Once I, I mentioned, I put an email to some folks to say, I said, I go, we need to get this week sorted. See where we are and then I'll reach out to them and, and, and that's helpful. We can talk this through and see if they're here, but I usually come. Um, we pause there, see if there are questions from the committee.
So I understand that once this all. I just, I understand that once you get the kindergarten numbers, you know. But when you talk about, like, from some of the things that we've seen, it looks like some of these are small kids and like these are little kids. Um, and I understand the sort of hesitation regarding the seventy seven, right? Because the kids won't fit. But just, just, again, this is something you'll look at with Lori and with the families. But if it's those stops that are closer to Plum Cove, then it's, you know, then it's those kids, if they're little, right? Squeezing in for the last mile to school. Right? I'm just wondering, I understand this, it, it's not an exception you want to make because when they get bigger, there won't be room, right?
Or what if they have a sibling?
Right, no, I understand, I understand.
Which is a.
I know, I know, I know it is. I'm just saying, you know, there, the safety concerns are increasing in the district and um, obviously it's the smallest kids who are having the biggest trouble. So, just as, you know, as we look through this, and I'm, again, I'm not going to come up with the answer now, but maybe they squeeze in.
Yeah, so, so I, I hear that other idea of squeezing folks in, um, and I think it's, you know, it's reasonable, right? This is something we came up with and made for as well, which is. There are about twenty five students that this covers. How do we decide which ones are, which ones aren't? We actually have to have space for all those kids because we can't say this family, yes, this family, no.
Right, of course.
No, and, and so, um, so, so, so I'm gonna say, I'm saying that's a complication.
Right.
That, that, that we have to think about, which may not be obvious to think about.
Right, I understand.
And, and that really is both, again, as made for, we, you know, we've worked on it, and then try and do something that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
So it's very much the same situation, you know, concerned about safety, concerns about, um, you know, walk, concerns about, you know, sidewalks or not, sort of stuff. Um, in May, in Maplewood area, um, the Gones Veterans and then, you know, it's, it's, it's similar, it's different, different landscape, different part of.
Right.
Part of the city.
Right.
Very similar. Um, so it's, it's a, and we've run up against that too, like we. I mean, only have some kids in the bus stuff.
Right.
So. That, that, that's not, that's not, so, so, so need more ideas, you know?
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm just, I'm sure, it's not the, it's not a brilliant idea. So, you know, it's not, you know, it's not like I'm coming up with something you won't buy, but just, just.
Keith?
Yeah, hi, um, you know, I, I want the public to understand that, you know, this is, this is a concern, I think, for a lot of us on the school, probably everyone on the school committee, the. Safety issues, you know, I, I myself have small children. I can't imagine, you know. What you guys must, must be going through and it's not an easy solution either. And so I have a harebrained idea and. I, you know, it's probably wishful thinking, but um, is there any way, you know, as a temporary basis, we could tie in. A, a relationship with the, the CADA system, perhaps having like somebody like a bus monitor on, on a bus for an elementary. School to ride with the elementary students, um. You know, we, we do this with the, the high school, of course, they're older, uh, but. I'm just trying to think out of the box if there's any other way to alleviate this problem, especially on like Washington Street, if there's already CADA running that way. Um, you know, thoughts?
Yeah, I don't know. Um, you know, you mentioned the, you know, the obvious thing that comes up is, you know, monitoring. Um, you can't, I, I, I don't know the details, but my, my inclination is that you can't have, you know. I, and you suggest this, you can have students on, young people unsupervised on CADA buses, right? We're responsible for them. Um, these buses, because they're so full, do have monitors. You know, we have very few monitors. Most of them are on special education runs. These are, I think, might be the only two elementary runs, you know, large buses that we have monitors on. That is because of SARS. And to manage and support it's ourselves. So, um, those monitors, of course, take up a seat, um, a part of the seat, at least. Um, but yeah, so, but yeah, thank you, thank you, Keith.
In the meantime. Everybody, you know, you hear about traffic concerns more and more, people driving faster. Um, I think mentioning to the police chief, chief county, that we would love better enforcement. Um, in this area of, you know, significant concern. Um, just even their presence in the morning might be helpful, um. Cause, you know, he can help some of those concerns by kind of changing community behavior as well, which I think we set up better.
We talked about, about O'Malley and I'll just, you know, let me just. Go text here, we're, we're saying, but um. So uh, to find out this, uh, this, the, this year's issue, um, like yesterday, therefore, um. So. Uh, this, I'm gonna get in the weeds of the, of the, of the, of the, because that's really what's dropped, what's, what's at this, okay? The, any after school runs are considered um, extra work by definition, either contract, if they're, we've agreed to, if they're, uh, teams, right? So they're not part of a typical, you know, daily run, okay, never happened. Um, and so both of those runs, um, both opted to begin the year when they have their bid there. It was when it's select routes and which routes they're, they're gonna drive, right? Um, and so uh, at this point, two drivers uh, have um, signed up for the three thirty runs. So we have a, from O'Malley, for after school at O'Malley, okay, uh, Monday through Friday. There is a three thirty um, run from the summer to three thirty, okay? Um, and that's been signed, that's been signed up. You got, we have dedicated drivers to do that, okay? Because it's optional, um, they, they have the option not to do that at any time. Okay, so I mean, no, let me say this one. If they're sick or absent that day, we have to find a replacement and that's hard to do. So they're obligated to do that from when they sign up for it, okay? But if they're sick or, if those two drivers are out for whatever reason, we're, um, you know, trying to. Solicit folks to pick it up, right? That's here in this. Nobody signed up last year or this year for four fifteen, the four fifteen buses. So last year, it's. The two drivers who, um, you know, uh. Who were doing a three thirty run chose, uh, sometimes to, you know, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to characterize that, but. To do the four fifteen sometimes not. But that's up to them. By our kind of, it's up to them. They have a choice because no one has, no one bid on those, on those runs, fourteen lots of that. The same thing as this year, same thing. So this year is the same thing. Nobody chose or bid on the four fifteen runs. So we are uh, up to posting them every day, you know, in advance, very, not every, not the morning, every day, posting them in advance. And um, seeing if folks sign up to that, to be done. That is a little less likely to happen this year, we believe. To have fewer, we, we, we believe fewer of them will be chosen. As you do four fifteen.
So then, should we eliminate that bus? I mean.
Yes.
I get those emails. I get those emails too.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are the four fifteen, so is three thirty is O'Malley Academy or the four fifteen, O'Malley Academy programs are any longer or are they for these sports programs?
Both and yes, okay? What I mean by that is, so O'Malley Academy onsite at, 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 at O'Malley, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday. The Tuesday programs are offsite. And they're part of the uh, the run, the after, the, the regular school day run.
Right.
They're included in that.
Right.
Um.
Right.
And Friday, no, O'Malley. And, and Friday, no, O'Malley Academy is, is on a Friday.
Okay, so the late bus on Friday is for?
Just the three thirty one.
For what?
For, for after-school work, after-school, you know, detention, after-school, anything after, happening after-school, you know, related, uh, you know, that's sort of, uh, teacher-driven, school-driven, that sort of stuff. Okay, but because, and that, the, the run is done, the three thirty run is, is, you know, um, put out there, money to buy it. Um, yeah, athletics as well, sorry, you mentioned athletics, athletics on different days, that sort of stuff, I just didn't skip. So, yeah, so, so, uh, so, you know, other questions, before I say what we're thinking of trying to work on, and what we.
Well, just as a kid, or the person who has kids, um, who takes the KDA bus to school, because they don't qualify for the bus.
Yep.
Could the KDA buses, I mean, I don't know their KDA routes, obviously, but the KDA buses, they're not always on time, and et cetera, et cetera, and I know they're crowded, but they could potentially be a way for kids on those later buses to, I mean, you know, but these, because middle school kids do take that, do take it.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And also, I believe, they don't need the bus pass this year, so.
Yeah, okay, great, yeah, yeah, something that, you know, when, 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 uh, Director Francis and I were on this this morning, and I didn't come up, it's helpful. So, uh, we, so, we're gonna keep on working on this, and seeing what happens the next two weeks, we don't know. You may have drivers who opt, who opt in, choose to do these, the late run, the four fifteen, we don't know that yet, okay? Um, so we're gonna see what happens, and gather data over the next couple of weeks, also gather data in terms of how many kids, you know, would be using that, okay? Because we don't exactly sure, that changes day to day, but the, the, you know, the, the four fifteen buses are really primarily, really. Um, uh, there may be some athletes sometimes on that, okay, but, so, so we're gonna, uh, gazpate on that, see how it's sorting out. May not be sorting out at all, very honestly, um, they, they go from there, see some other ideas and exceptions. But it's, I, I don't, I don't want, I'm gonna try and minimize it, trying to help make sure you and the public who are listening understand it, um, but, but it's, it's, I, I'm not, we're not happy about it. Um, it's really hard on families, it's, I mean, O'Malley Middle School, I mean, O'Malley Academy, as you heard me say, is like, one of the best things that happens, dealing with this, right? Well, it's a great program, and so many things like this, um, you know, it's, it's a real important piece of the O'Malley experience. It supports families in lots of ways, and so, it is, uh, uh, very concerning that, that, um, the way we have the structure of transportation is, isn't really conducive to having consistency. That's something, I hope we might, I hope we'll work with the drivers, and, you know, possibly, but, but, that's, that's, we, I'm gonna get some more information, we're gonna work in on most of my patterns here. Have a question, though. Uh, I'm gonna go, um, and so I just wanted to ask you, so, when, when, especially in the bus, there's some families who are very specifically affected by this, okay? And also Plum Cove, and now O'Malley Academy as well, and so, in touch either through the school, or through my office, or transportation, you know, with those families, and in touch with them, and, and, or continue to work on that. See what we can sort it out.
And we need the community self-spraying the word about needing bus drivers.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, and then, yes, and then, just so folks know, so again, yes, please, yes, please, yes, please. It's still, and also another thing that the committee did, this is a few years ago, I think my first year here, is, is we changed it so that we are, you know, paying bus drivers while we train them. Okay, that hadn't happened, it's not, it doesn't happen on its place, okay, we get them fully trained, you know, from nothing, um, we're paying them the whole time, it's a six to eight month process. You know, so it's not like it happens, um, you know, and it, so it's, it's a real investment, both for the person, and also for, also for, um, the employee of also the district, you know?
Can I ask you just one more question? What about the pathways, bus drivers? Like.
It's a, uh.
Well, I mean, is there any way, I don't know how many runs the pathways, bus drivers have, but I see the pathways, so they're trained people already, I mean, I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a way to, like, find out if there's any space, and if they would want extra money, like, to work for the lost publics. Um, they're in the same, I mean, they're in the same neighborhoods a lot, I'm not saying same buses, I'm saying, they just may be another pool of trained bus drivers who might have, I don't know the pathway scheduling, I know.
No, you're, you're not saying poach them, I'll be clear, you're not saying, you're not saying I'm not poaching them, I'm not saying, it's, your ideas, is can be combined with them in some ways.
Saying if they.
If they have a schedule that allows them to then.
Take on a route.
Yeah.
I'm not saying poach them.
No, I, I, I just, I wanted to be, I, I didn't think you were, so I wanted to be clear that you were.
But I see those bus drivers, and every day, and they're driving down the buses, and they're training to their, their presence, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, good, good, yeah, that's helpful, that's, all right, let me, uh, move on to whatever's next here. Oh, summer, this is a great, summer, summer capital projects, maintenance repair, our, our, our update for the summer. Um, and, uh, just a couple of things, so, uh, one thing, I, I, I can't express the level of work and effort that goes into making sure our schools are ready, from the end of the school year, beginning of school, and this slide does no justice to them, okay? But I'll, I'll try, I really does, okay? Um, there's cleaning, stripping, and buffing of all the floors, I mean, I mean, all the floors of all schools, okay? Now, the asterisk here is that the new schools, okay, they've got different, you know, marmolium, uh, you know, different, um, surfaces that don't.
Flooring.
Better flooring, better flooring in so many ways, okay, they don't require stripping and buffing, that's why you have asterisks there. But still, you know, on, on, you know, at least five schools, or four schools, still require all of that, I'll show some photos in a second. I think they're very nice and shiny, uh, but that, that, that alone means moving all their furniture out of all the classrooms, and they're back in about. Then you've been at the, at the new school, meaning West Veterans, West, West, East Veterans and West Parish, they're cleaning the floors, it's still got moved, so this is a ton of move this stuff, okay? Washing windows, windows, those bathrooms, common areas, okay, painting and repairs are happening, painting, all the things in the first two bullets, and more of, you know, cleaning that I can't capture, um, and moving things, are, you know, uh, DPW's school custodians, and other custodians will help out, the painting repairs are other DPW versions, okay, for the most part, right? Um, and at the same time, they're managing this around, say, East Veterans, you know, mainly in, uh, the high school, around summer school, it's going on, okay, other activities in the building. Um, or, or, and especially at the high school this year, ongoing capital projects, so there will be flooring, there are a whole bunch of projects to talk about. And, and one of the concerns that John Christopher, Bonesy, who's the head custodian here, you know, going into what was a short summer, I'm really concerned about, could his crew do as good a job as it normally do with the regular stuff, considering all of the things that are going on of the school, summer school, but also the capital projects, and, and he's reported that his crew here, you know, school custodian crew, uh, led by, led by Bonesy, did a fantastic job, he's so pleased with them, he's got really high standards, and, and, and he was concerned about, but he's really pleased with him out, the campus there, so. That just goes to say, this group, and the people they represent, and support, so, um, just a huge thank you to them. So this Jamie Curley, operations project manager for DPW, uh, new to his position last year, it's, it's actually a new position, that has helped our work with DPW hugely, probably because there's a person there, but mostly because EJ Curley is, how good he is communicating, supporting, working with us, okay, working with our principals, that sort of stuff. Great job, you know, a lot of work, especially this summer, but even before that, the Kook Crew, City Carpenter, Chris Rose, City Plumber, Matt Gallagher, City, Matt Tristan, Paul Russo, Custody Manager, who also, so, those folks really, and then, uh, other folks who work with them, have just done, always do, but this, this summer did a great job, on lots of areas, which I'll go over in a moment. Our head custodians are there, gee, I'm Shane, Matt Swanson, Mike Matanzi, Frank Sterna, Jonathan Lohr, for, for, you know, yeah, okay, I think that's, and then, uh, of course, John Christopher at the high school, and then, of course, all their staff, okay, uh, who help out, so just want to really just, you know, take a moment here to appreciate all the hard work those folks do. Um, that's, you know, so typical, that's sort of repair maintenance, but also, these things, which, uh, so for example, um, uh, JD Curley's been hugely, uh, helpful on these programs, and, and, uh, working on these, supporting these, and helping the project manager on the, on the local tech program of case. So, uh, these are things that you've approved the funding last year through grants for the most part, um, that now are being done, basically, I want to really, um, share that, so. Repair, resurfacing the floor, and the auto shop, this is a smaller shop, and it, we, we are, the effort is through, uh, grants, state grants, to make it a modern learning, um, uh, classroom, advanced learning classroom, with advanced learning simulations for natural vehicles, but also a great classroom for learning. It has been a sort of broken-down, half-utilized auto shop, sort of used for classroom space, okay? Um, got new epoxy floors being, being put in, um, that's scheduled to be, scheduled to be finished later this month, electricians are doing the rough installation of all the work. We've got new condensers for HVAC and climate control in there, um, those been worked on, two coats of paint are by the walls, and everything, um, the classroom furniture has been delivered, and is being stored right now in the large automotive space, teacher desk, new teacher desk, sorry, and then we have, uh, the automotive lab space simulators have been built, uh, and working to deliver it, so we have some photos, so this is the new floor, and you can see also the painting, and how it's, you may not have seen it before, but it basically is an auto shop, okay, you know, and that we, we couldn't really be used for too much auto work, okay, some. But now it's gonna be, you know, sort of, sort of a, a modernized classroom, and, and space for simulation, and, uh, burning about, uh, all the, uh, work. This is what, we, we've been talking about, these electric vehicles, simulate, EV simulators for a while, if I asked what these things look like? It, they're, they're large panels where they are working on the electronics, and, and, that power the vehicle, and that's about all I can say about that. Um, I don't have much more, but that's what they look like, and I think there'll be at least a couple or a few of them, okay? Um, and those, we're working, those are built, um, for us at this point, um, and, uh, that's, and then we'll learn, we're gonna be, well. So advanced makers are moving to advanced manufacturing, again, these are, uh, grants funded by Mass CEC, the Clean Energy Center, uh, that were approved last year, we use the computer lab space, there's on the right-hand side, is our climate control, that all new computers are installed, often the grant. Heat pumps are installed, in, in advanced manufacturing, uh, shop, provide cooling ventilation, uh, for top of climate control, those machines put off a lot of heat, that helps a lot. And then the classroom also has new drop ceilings on the right there too, so that's much better utilization of those spaces. Uh, the nurses is from a state IBAC grant, this is the nurses', um, straight health suite in the, uh, high school. You see, I saw the heat pump, it's a, the, the heat pump for the, uh, nurse's office is the closest one, the other ones are for the, uh, weight and training room, uh, for athletics, um, so new, uh, AC and heating units that are run by the heat pumps there, so much better. That climate control, heating and cooling, proper heat, cooling in, uh, suite, that's, uh, the healthcare. Um, and then a lot of work on the bathrooms, um, so you see GHS O'Malley, Pumped Open, Beeman, um, uh, so some of these GHS at O'Malley, um, were started, and the efforts, and, and pursuant funding from the city, started by DPW, um, and that's to replace stalls and partitions, um, can redo, uh, and make, uh, some stalls accessible, maybe accessible. Uh, and then you are capital planning process, budget planning process with our elementary schools, Plum Cove and Beeman, have a need to approve them, came through that process, uh, also funded, and this is work done by DPW, for this part. Um, so, uh, that's on the left-hand side, you see Plum Cove, there's also a new, uh, cover for the heating element there, that uncovered for years. Um, so those are some of the things, uh, and then there's also flooring at many, um, schools, O'Malley, uh, so for uh, four bathrooms at O'Malley, new flooring and new stalls as well, you see that's, um, and then also at GHS, in the locker rooms and showers, new floors, and the bathrooms there for girls and boys, and the shower floors. That's GHS locker and bathroom, that nice new floor there, um, the partition might be new, new two. Um, that's shower room flooring on the left, that's O'Malley flooring for bathroom on the right. These are epoxy flake floors, which if you remember, things like the, um, great-looking flooring in the East Veterans Art, um, Room. It's that quality, really that quality, flooring, really great, and you can pick some colors, I think we mostly picked green plates, um, also blue too, I believe. There's that, uh, more flooring at the high school, this is another really help, so, uh, this is funded by the city of Gloucester, this is something that DPW pursued, uh, two springs ago to get flooring, but because of materials, we had to delay it, uh, you know, from summer twenty four to summer twenty five. Um, all stairwells and landings are being redone, rubber flooring, most of them are done, uh, we'll get to the, uh, what hasn't done yet at the moment. Then that's the main hallway there, leading from the main entrance past the main office and guidance suite, um. Great year, oh, she just graduated, so you see the flooring, that's a marmolium flooring, which is similar to what was done in all the new school, in West Parish, in East Veterans. Uh, the athletic hallways, um, ground floor, the second floor outside the field house, you know, all brand new, um, uh, I think that's marmolium, and then the stairwells are all rubber. Um, stairwells and stairwell landing, all rubber, rubber, that's all the stairwells, in the, in the, in the school, including the landings out here, um, just by the athletic, uh, complex. And, so there's some photos of what it looks like, great photos, same material that were used on these veterans', uh, stairwells. More photos, they're having some challenges, it's not an easy project this summer, but maybe some hiccups, uh, mostly a real challenge with the contractor. Uh, that includes, uh, even though they had a year delay, not having sufficient materials, okay, very frustrating. Um, also materials were, were cut incorrectly, so initially went to a new order, okay? Um, they not staffed the project as promised, um, so they could not complete it, uh, by the end of August, even though we had the schedule, and that they had the time to do that, if staffed properly, okay, this means that, th- these are, flooring has to, like, you need some, uh, it's not like a, a one day, but, okay, you've got, you've got to close down the stairwells. Um, they've got to be, you know, resurfaced, and then installed, and the cure, it's our stuff, you know, it's about a week, week long process, so they will return this end of the break to complete. Uh, I think I had this correct, um, the stair, the short stairwells in, leading up from the old entrance, there are four steps each. Um, and then I think also by, uh, CDTE as well, that, that, um, those two areas that we want to keep. Oh, and I think also then the, um, sort of viewing areas, second floor viewing areas, that look over the, um, the gym house as well. So, what very, it's a good prop, good, we're, we're happy where we are, and doing it, DPW is, you know, beating it, thanks to them, uh, not satisfied with that. I think that's, um, the full update, so that's a lot.
So.
Yeah, I really appreciate it, uh, DPW's, DPW's.
Um, this reminds me of the O'Malley Windows.
You're right, yeah, it'll be contracted, yeah.
So when are we on O'Malley?
Oh, complete, all done, um, you know, complete, um, sorry, uh, so general completion, um, finally voices are being tallied, and then we pay. Um, uh, the, there, there was outstanding, uh, concern about, uh, you know, the additional cost, it was in top of them, and, uh, it came out in our favor. So, um, I think I said that there was between fifteen, seventy thousand dollars we thought we should pay for, and it didn't go above that, I think it was fifty four thousand dollars mark.
Even that place where they didn't, in the skylights, or, you know, the place where they didn't look correctly, then they had the wrong stuff. This is not particular, we don't have to talk about, they had, they had not, right?
Yeah, so that, that, that was the added cost, was to correct that.
Right.
With additional blocking, and, yeah. Yeah, so it's all done correctly, okay, that's something that we had, you know, continued to look at, um, we also had to make sure that all this, or, you know, whenever you're doing work on a roof, you know, and, and they had to, you know, pull back the roof, and then add more flashing, because there's sort of, you know, skylights, okay? There's always a question of, will the existing warranties remain in effect, that depends on the workmanship, and how it's done, that remains in effect, that's really good. Uh, and then also the warranties, workmanship, um, of the product itself are also in effect as well, so removing those closed down. We have, empty, further questions? Other questions, I mean, extensive work done, I think, yes, yeah. They're not, no, they're not glamorous things, but they're really important pieces, and they also make things look better, actually, you know, yeah, makes a difference, really bad, but, but, absolutely. And, and I, and I, I don't know if, um, plans to continue, um, we've done it, DPW over the years, or recent years, has done wider work at, um, there have been bathrooms. I just don't know off the top, and like, if we're all set with them, or if they're, or continuing to, to update some more. All right, we have one more important piece. There is, um, a couple, a couple more important pieces, one is, um, uh, there are a few positions in the district, I think I have this right, uh, off, off my head, uh, where, um, we have a search process, um, uh, identify a, uh, I, uh, essentially, it's been my responsibility, after that process, these positions is to identify a K and R recommend, that's Chief Insurance Officer, um, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Special Education. Yeah, I think those are three. Um, so we have a situation, uh, here as well, uh, Gary Frisch, after a, a career spanning at least two states, a number of districts, uh, in public education, uh, finance, uh, is retired. Uh finance, uh is retired, as I quoted earlier this summer, uh in January. And we had to do a search for a process for U C for CFO. And a committee, uh that included um one school committee, committee member, Liz Dexter. Uh myself, David Asprello, um Robert Eason. Um and Connor McCorkle, who's the city, the city treasurer, CFO. Um really important to have someone for the city, because we do so much work for the city, obviously, and finance is invited. And we are working as well, if not better than ever before with the city, they have for a few years now. And want to kiss me now, a little more to have on that, also Melissa has been in the school, so. Um it is my absolute pleasure to uh recommend. Cody Marshall, who goes tonight to be the Chief Financial Officer for Gloucester Schools, you can clap for that. The, the um goes up against a stiff competition, um and uh and I went very well. Um Cody is a rare finance, school finance person who brings really high quality and excellent tactical chops. Uh and also really brings um uh great interpersonal relationships and the notion of building team. And um so uh he's been with us for, I don't remember. Five, six, seven, seven, seven years, okay, a couple of roles, Director of Finance as he is now, but also working uh on the I T, I T team as well. Took a couple of years away from the finance work, um and I'm glad he came back to it, uh but he still helps with I T as you can saw tonight. Um but that uh work in I T, um also he spoke very particularly about. Just um how it's helped to, you know, build systems, you know, teams and this and stuff, and so, and like. Just really appreciate his integrity, his attention to detail, um and the way he works folks. Um and uh I, I deeply believe and our committee believes that um. He's gonna be in um, gonna be, gonna be in good hands going forward. Well, mainly in your school, Cody, or Chief Financial Officer, so uh I am officially recommending his appointment to the school committee. You're ready to uh, to, you have to vote on that, I'm gonna welcome to ask for any questions.
Well, I'm gonna also follow that with um Melissa Texer Prince was um on the search committee, on the interview committee and. And uh so she wrote something up because she is away. Um but she felt very um passionately about the choice of Cody, um so she put some things in writing, um. So I will read hers, um. Uh I had the opportunity to interview uh Cody for the position of Chief Financial Officer. Cody Marshall brings a strong background in municipal finance, proven understanding of Gloucester's financial systems, fairness. And a deep commitment to our schools and community. As a current Gloucester employee, he has consistently demonstrated loyalty and dedication to supporting the educational mission of our district. Connor McCorkle, City of Gloucester Treasurer, also a member of the interview team, confirmed to me that Cody has established strong working relationships with city government. Including City Auditor Kenny Costa. Cody has earned the trust of the Gloucester Public Schools' financial business office employees. And is well respected for his level-headed collaborative approach. His experience with financial reporting, compliance with Massachusetts laws, and his collaborative working approach with current CFO Gary Frisch. Where he often suggests recommendations to budget and finance subcommittee meetings reflects both his expertise and reliability. In addition to his financial education certifications and knowledge, Cody has significant experience with technology. Data systems and process improvement, his openness to learning and. To learning coupled with his thoughtful analysis and practical problem solving skills. Positioning him to enhance the efficacy and transparency of our financial operations. Uh based on Cody's qualifications, proven track record and commitment to Gloucester Public Schools. Without reservation, I recommend that the school committee approve Cody Marshall for the position of Chief Financial Officer, respectfully submitted. Melissa Texer Prince. So, anybody have a question? Um I'll let you, you go first.
Yeah, I um, I mean, I'm terribly impressed, so glad to welcome you on as CFO. Um and uh. Well, it's wonderful, seven years of service and um nine years of, of work since college, right? And uh you've worked, what's, what's the work in I T, what was, what was that?
I was a systems analyst. Yeah, but really, you do it all no matter what kind of job you have, right? Yeah, I worked very closely with the uh Assistant Director and ensuring. Stability and progress and all the systems we have in place today that helped me. Really build foundations to how I approach human financial goals, so.
Excellent, yeah.
Well, I have other questions, I'm just, I'm just thrilled, I've seen your work, I experienced your detail. Your, you know, attention to detail and your camaraderie and congeniality and I just am very excited.
Thank you. It's uh, um it's uh important when you can, um it does a number of games, but um to promote from within. You know, and build the team from within, and it helps in so many ways, um which is how to keep, keep events going. Uh for learning curve is much, uh much less, it's always steep, but everyone steps up. Um but um we'll make sure we have support for Cody on that, um but it's, it's a, it's a great, it's a, I, I appreciate them. When, when we can, and we are like, yeah, it's not, in this case, it's actually working.
Uh I will also follow with my comments, I mean, my background is finance, so I um. Uh and I was Chair of B N F for um quite some years, have had. And, and not recently, but um Melissa is the Chair of B N F. And the opportunity to work with Cody, who is first at the district, and I'm just so impressed with his knowledge and his analytical. Um attention, um you know, a lot of people can move, you know, no numbers and how they add and everything, but to think about what it means. To the business that you're doing numbers for, finance for, um is a different mindset. Um which adds the value of strategic value um to a position of finance, which I have always valued. Um and Cody has brought that from the start, made recommendations, he. He works very closely with people in the department, um he knows all of their jobs. Can step in, which so, you know, knowing everything from the ground up helps you be a better manager. And I think Gary has done an excellent job bringing Cody along and empowering him with one more responsibility such that he is. Ready for this next step in his career, um I think the most, one of the most disappointed people when you went to I T was me. I was really happy to go back to finance.
Me too.
And um and I agree with Ben, our job as employers is to. Develop people and to bring them along and to provide that path for advancement and when they are ready. Uh and there is an opportunity, that is where we should be looking first, um. Uh because they have grown with our district and um and I have continued faith that he will continue to grow. Um and will lead our district in the financial area as well as the business side of being CFO. Um in a terrific and very professional. Um so, I'm delighted that, one, he wanted this, that step and two, that the search committee um has recommended. So that said, I would like to make a motion. That we approve the superintendent's recommendation for Chief Financial Officer, Cody Marshall.
Second. Any more discussion?
Okay, we'll call a vote, uh Keith Minio.
Yes.
Um Bill Melvin.
Yeah.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy, yes, okay, unanimously and enthusiastically approved.
Standing for the opportunity.
And I believe you are a Gloucester High School friend.
I am.
Out of everything.
I just remember the process from here, so your vote allows, uh it authorizes me to negotiate a contract for coding, but that's what we'll do for the next. Um and then um uh Gary is, is, you know, in place um uh into January. Um but obviously with Cody stepping up, we'll do a, a search for Derek Finance mission, um hoping to have um setting Cody in place. Um and you know, uh in December, basically, I mean, obviously, these two have, will work on a transition, it can either work on a transition, it's all a transition for your form, you know, in a sense. Um but uh you know, but this gives us quite a bit of time to um. In part, in the go, the part, part of when in exact code takes on the full responsibilities, we're pre-negotiating. Although we also then, you know, um within a short, short period of time, within a short period of time, uh post for our next finance. But first want to talk to Cody and, and then we have the next CFO play or, you know, you know, named. Um we want to make sure that the, the two jobs, the complimentary and the individual competent. Um you know, it comes with only two, so I'll take a little bit of time to figure out what we're looking for in terms of finance and then uh we'll pursue that.
I, I just uh something quick, I didn't realize that Cody was in the room, I, I can't see him on the camera, it's just, maybe uh. Other people wanna, you know, say hello to him, I saw the hand, okay? What?
You were next to Gary and you can't quite see you, see?
I think he's gonna be joining.
Yeah, sorry, I thought it was.
That you were joining?
Yeah.
Oh, maybe I missed that, I don't know, I didn't.
It's okay.
Right, Keith, does any, did you want to make any comments about Cody or you're good?
Um I would like to say congratulations and um I'm looking forward to uh, you know, new horizons uh for your future. And uh collaborating with you, it'd be uh great.
Hi, bro, thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, congrats.
Um, okay, so uh one more piece of business for me tonight. Um it's been a real honor and privilege to be the Superintendent of Gloucester of this great city. Um and uh it's something that is a highlight of my, my professional career. Um and, and at the same time, um after much thought, personal reflection with my family. Um I'm renouncing tonight that this is gonna be my last school year in the superintendent. It is something that uh I've not taken lightly ever, day one of the work and just the same way, don't take decisions like. Very hard decision for me, um personally and professionally, Gloucester is a place I've, I've grown to love. It's my, it's our home, um will continue to be our home, um you know, um. And I'm really devoted to it, it has a way of doing this people, um some from many generations, some of us who are very new. Um so I'm really proud of, of the significant accomplishments we've done together, when I say we, I mean, we, I mean. Our staff, our families, our students, school committee, um our leadership team, our school, school leaders, um you know. What everyone knows, I hope, and needs to know is that it takes all of us from different roles and perspectives to really make the place up. Um you know, um I'll just go through a few things that I just consider were highlights, um you know, navigating the first year of COVID together. Um in a way that very few, few school systems did, um being a school more than almost every uh. Uh school district in, in the Commonwealth, um we made really important strides in structure, you know. Um new curriculum, uh elementary school, children's club. Uh English literacy, new at, uh the first time in many years at, at O'Malley for math and English. Um we are really now very actively, and I think uh more than we ever had. Like work on improving special education instruction, their strike programs. And supporting students in ways that are much more comprehensive and systematic than before, and it's a really big deal. I mean, and you know, with the school committee support, we've really invested in that, um we have done remarkable work over the past. Um you know, uh five plus years on capital, on, on facilities, building a brand new school. Um that, you know, I mean, and bringing two school communities together, you know, probably even harder in some ways than. Um when actually building a school, so we did that, um the facility under budget, on time, during the most difficult building times of all time, very well managed. Um we've um, uh it's all the playgrounds at Plum Cove and Beeman, people would forget about that, they use every day. We refurbished the exteriors of both schools as well, including, you know, the modules when I got here, um when I started rather, you know, were leaking. And we're um often had visitors from outside, in terms of analysis, um that were able to, you know, really make sure those facilities are good for, for upcoming years. Uh replaced the millage's original windows, these things were never without hiccups, without hiccups, but you know, now better for heating, cooling there. And of course, finished the product of safety and security of the entrances at um, at, at O'Malley and I School. Uh been through some challenging times, um some flush times, there's a federal COVID relief hours, but also coming off of that. And then handling some really difficult times in terms of budget as well. Um and I've done that all together, difficult circumstances, so. We stabilized enrollment, um and have reduced school choice out of this by twenty two percent. Which is, you know, really helpful in terms of enrollment, but also helpful in terms of folks competence in schools. And I think something I'm most proud of is the work we've all done together on the career vocational technical programs. You know, really something that um had been uh. I, I don't, I don't, it's fair to say neglected, but not, not prioritized for, for other viewers, and of the committee. Um uh district, city leaders, two mayors. Um and, and us, and our team has really prioritized that and we expanded enrollment all programs, expanded them uh the possibility of folks doing um. Of our students doing, getting out into the field and working, especially juniors and seniors, great, great partnerships. Um you know, planning, designing, and launching a medical system program, which is a big deal, and that, and that opens up the explore program, so, you know. All our ninth graders have the option and the ability to participate and learn with those programs. Um and then all that is part of securing, you know, has been helped by securing nearly two million dollars in grants in the past two years. You know, to, to support a vote check. So, those are some uh big accomplishments, and again, um I'm proud of those and I know every single day. That I play a part in that, but um and I'm glad to, but so many of the other folks really make those, all those things. Um but I haven't. Let the school committee know now, so the school committee can give you and create, you know, the, the, the follow process, the. Process you determine to identify the record year for our schools. Well, and of course, I will continue to lead all our schools through this entire school year. Um we have plenty of work to offer, great start, it's a great start that we talked about tonight. Um and uh that's gonna continue, it needs to continue, I'll be there every school day, I'll always am. Um supporting and meeting and um to make sure helping our, our folks in a good job. You know, I'm grateful for all our staff, we're, we're working every day to make this a really positive, you know. Positive collaboration, you know, and purpose to start. Um so I'll just read this, the thing, and while, while there are many paths ahead for me professionally, I posit, I'll, I'll always look, look at my time. As a superintendent, superintendent of Gloucester Schools, as well as high points in my professional life. And career, it's been the most rewarding, challenging, and fulfilling job of my life, um and there's just no second place. Um but for now, we have really important work to do this year, um and as I like to say. Gotta make sure that every, every day matters, every student belongs, and every student learns, so. Sorry for any surprises comes with it, it's probably, there is some significant surprise, but among folks. I was able to tell my briefing team this afternoon in person, um I'll send a message to our staff today and prepare them.
So um I'm glad this is not where I love the information, um but obviously. Uh there's many, many months to be appreciative of everything you've done, um and I'm, uh it's bittersweet news. Um because you, you know, as you said, we together, but you, you name. Have done some amazing things for our schools and students, you know, two A M meetings on COVID. Once a meeting, see, both get in the school, open, you know, the accomplishment, which you said, that's just the tip, the expert of how you've impacted this district. That's a list, but it's not, doesn't encompass your presence and the, you know, the part you've brought, have always brought, so it will, our students.
Thank you, I, I really appreciate that, I, I do try to bring all myself in a role and.
I just, I'm not, I can't do a whole thing. But it's still quite striking how you say it, right?
Oh yeah.
Um and uh I just, yeah, just a favor, thank you.
Yeah, no, my second motion, a big, big thank you for your leadership and inspiration and uh. I feel like we should clap, but.
And, and, and again, wanna make sure, um you know, we have a, you know, it's a long year and a lot of work to do, and um and I'll be there every moment. And 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 again, want to make sure, uh you know, we have a, you know, it's a long year and a lot of work to do and um and I'll be there every moment. And uh yeah, you know, because there's nothing more important to say than our schools and our students.
So, um I've spoken with Alicia Mallon from Perfield Director at. Our field representative from Massachusetts Association of School Players. We will uh have a meeting. Uh maybe a special meeting next week just to provide focus to this process and what um. Uh what the options are and what that looks like, I know there are. Couple, few of us on the committee that have been involved in choosing Ben, um but there, this is new for. For um what we have, so we'll get her guidance, um this is one of the services they provide, they do this all the time. Um and so having someone from outside and walk us through what that process is and help us through thinking out through our options. Um will be important whether that's an internal um option or an external search. Uh what those two paths may look like, so um. That said. We will just continue this school year with great leadership. And and deal with any somitatory stuff.
We have a fantastic team, um the school staff, school leaders and we.
A great, a great team. Okay, Keith, did you want to say something, I saw your hand go, but.
Yeah, I didn't even realize I still had my microphone on, but yeah, it it's it's hard being on this side of the computer screen, uh not to. You know, give you my well wishes in person, Ben, but uh I I really uh can't say. Uh how much I I appreciate what you've done for our school systems and you know, for my kids personally as well, um. I couldn't think of a better superintendent for for Gloucester Public Schools and it's gonna be, you know, hard to see you go, but I I really wish you the best.
Thank you, Keith, that means a lot, I really appreciate that, and then like you said, um. Yeah, I I have such um love and respect for this city, so I hope you say that means a lot, thank you.
Okay, so uh we are going into executive session. And then we will come out to uh vote on the ASME, you have one item of business, one one item of that's we made on from. Um so I move that we enter executive session pursuant to executive session purpose two of Master of the Law thirty A, section twenty one A. To discuss strategy um and or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and purpose three of M G L, Master of the Law thirty A. Uh section twenty one A to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Gloucester ASME, their whole union A, so second. Okay, we'll call vote, um Keith Minio.
Uh just a quick question, did, do we have a warrants to approve? It was on the agenda.
For what?
To be approved warrants or I I thought that was on the agenda.
But there are no grants to approve tonight.
Oh, okay, okay, just wanted to check, yes, so yes, I agree.
Um okay, Keith Minio.
Yes.
Uh Bill Melvin?
Yeah.
Jeremy McKeen?
Yes.
Or are we sitting here? Kathy Clancy, yes. Okay, um so we are going, we are not gonna come back into um Zoom open session. Um but we are allowed not to do so for the purpose of open meeting law, um but the. But then we will capture uh the vote after we come out of executive session. Um okay, good night, everyone, thank you for joining us.